Okay, we'll go ahead and start the Willmar City Council work session. First item on the agenda is public comment. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to address the council this evening? Seeing and hearing none, I'll go to our city attorney, Mr. Robert Scott, and you have a new attorney with us today. If you'd like to do an introduction, that would be great.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. With me to my right is Eric Ordell. Eric started with our firm in February. He's a 2017 graduate of Hamlin Mitchell Law School. So, we're excited to have him aboard, and he's here tonight just to observe a example of a wonderful city council and observe your meeting and just kind of get acquainted to the process in case he's called upon to attend at some point in the future.
Sounds good. I was hoping you weren't saying you're now going to supply two attorneys for us. Thank you very much. Eric, welcome. If there's any questions you have, either address those with Scott or Robert, or you can talk with one of the council members after the meeting. I look forward to meeting you during the break, so we're glad you're here. First item on the agenda is a resolution declaring surplus equipment and authorizing sale at public auction. Mr. Scott?
Thank you again, Mayor, members of the council. This is an item that is coming before you after conversations I had with the city clerk and city administrator about the upcoming annual city auction. As I understand it, the auction is something that takes place every year by which the city disposes of surplus equipment in a fair process where the public has the opportunity to bid on each item. In your packet is a resolution declaring that everything attached on the Exhibit A is surplus property and directing that it be sold at the public auction, as well as examples of template agreements that could be used, which are Exhibit B and Exhibit C, in order to ensure that the city is protected from any liability from anyone who purchases an item and then uses it after the date of sale. This came about because we had some questions, or some questions were directed to me about how those agreements should be approved and executed, and in talking with staff, it seems that this is a longstanding practice of the city to have this auction, but there really hadn't been any formal city council involvement. There didn't appear to be any formal policy or ordinance, and it's the type of thing when you're disposing of public equipment that really should have the council approval. So, I don't expect this would be controversial. It's a routine practice. Everything staff had done in previous years, I think, is legal and can be continued, but in order to ensure that everyone's acting consistent with council policy, this resolution was suggested for this year. It's also possible that, and likely, I think, after the auction this year, that we try and summarize current practices that the staff utilizes and bring that forward for formal approval as a formal policy of the council. With that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions about the resolution.
Councilmember Verano?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Scott. I was just wondering, is it necessary to have both the mayor's signature and the city administrator's signature on each? Is this for each piece of equipment that's sold that they have to sign off on this?
It is. I think the council... So, the reason it's drafted that way is you have an ordinance on the books requiring the mayor and city administrator to sign every contract. I think that if the council would like to streamline this, you could direct as part of a policy after this year that staff have the... Basically, be delegated authority to just handle each of these pieces. Since we don't have that in place, that's why we drafted it with the administrator and mayor to sign.
Okay, so that's something we should think about going forward?
Yeah, I think so.
After this year?
I would recommend that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilmember Fagerly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Scott, I see that there's some playground equipment in here. Were they taken out of the parks because they were unsafe?
Councilmember Fagerly, I believe that is the case, but I would have to defer to staff on exactly which pieces were included.
Okay.
I would just say that, I don't see Sean here, but I know that we've had discussions in our staff meeting, and some of the equipment that was not safe, we're not trying to sell that and claim that it is safe. That was one of the concerns that we talked about. Some of it is just outdated or very worn-out equipment. That was another thing that we talked about in declaring this, and also that the buyers understand what they're buying, and so that we don't pass on liability that we don't want to have, right?
Yeah, I remember talking about it a couple of years ago, and I said, "Well, can the general public buy some?" And we were told at that time, "No, it's unsafe." I said, "Even if you sign a liability clause, hold the city harmless." No, we're destroying it all. Now, I see they didn't destroy it, and they're selling it.
And, like I said, Sean's not here to speak to it, but we did have a group discussion, and my understanding is that we're not selling anything that is harmful or could be dangerous to the public.
Okay. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you. I was glad to see some of those pieces there, because they're actually antiques. And if you go out and take a look at... I think there is a market in the antique market for some of those pieces that were removed, some of the playground equipment. So, and I would guess the clause that were... The paper that we're asking people to sign would remove us from the liability of what they plan to do with it afterwards, correct?
Correct. So, the exhibit, I think it's Exhibit B, was a contract suggested to be used by the League of Cities for precisely this occasion, so that everyone understands when they're purchasing it, they're purchasing it as-is, and they're waiving any potential claim they could have resulting from the use of that equipment after the date of sale.
So, staff is requesting this to be moved forward to tonight's council meeting. Normally, this would not be an emergency situation, liquidating equipment, but I think probably the emergent piece of it is, is the fact that we didn't have the policy in place before. And so, if we're going to abide by the sale, we will need to move it forward for tonight.
Yeah, Mayor, I believe the only urgency with this is that the auction is on May 11th. I suppose if the council were to wait...
Mayor, I'm being told that the advertisement is going into the paper tomorrow, so we have to put this advance notice out. That's another part of the urgency. Of course, if you put on there a red wagon, and there's not a red wagon, I guess people might be upset, but they might get over it, you know? So...
Mr. Mayor? Now, May 11th, is that the governor's fishing opener? Is there...
This happens in the morning.
Okay.
At 10:00 AM.
Okay. I just want to bring it up, just in case. Thank you.
Good point. Thank you for bringing that up.
What day is it?
May 11th.
Oh, it's Friday.
Friday. I need some direction, folks.
I think we should move it forward.
Next item on the agenda is Minnesota Main Street Program Presentation. Ms. Anderson?
I'll just find it here. So, it was requested that the Minnesota Main Street Program have just a little presentation put together with some more details for the council for that. PAM is one of the affiliated members, or one of the partners with the Main Street America Program, and they head the Minnesota Main Street Program for the state themselves. So, just one of their quotes right off the bat, "A thriving downtown has a powerful impact on a community, its people, its finances, and its growth." Tonight, the proposal, continue as an affiliated Minnesota Main Street City for 2018, utilizing staff to collaborate with downtown interests, create and execute goals, and begin analysis of downtown. And I'll go into some more detail about what that all entails. PAM has moved forward a memorandum of understanding for the city to continue as an affiliated Main Street City for 2018. Currently, nothing is signed, and they've kind of given us that grace period to get it signed as the downtown development dissolved last year. Cost, the membership fee, is $2,000. It was originally $2,500, and it is discounted for us. I was talking to Serena, who is PAM's representative for this program. There is no startup fee if you chose not to continue in this agreement this year and decided three years down the road that that's something you'd like to continue with again or pursue. The only difference is that there's an application acceptance process that would have to be reinstated and gone through again for the city. So, first, we wanted to start out just with a little video that Main Street America put together. It's just a couple of minutes here.
...are the heart of our communities. They are nations' gathering places, places of shared memory, celebration, and economic activity. They represent the core American principles of ingenuity, inclusion, and creativity. Yet, over the years, Main Streets have faced many challenges, from suburbanization to the deterioration of historic buildings to the changing face of retail. While these challenges are formidable, today's Main Streets are resilient through hard work, planning, commitment, and action by local volunteers and leaders. Main Streets across America are thriving.
Main Street stands for a revitalized America.
Downtown is important because it's the heart and soul of any community. If you don't have a healthy downtown, you simply don't have a healthy town.
Everybody knows what it's like when the public square is actually working and thriving. People are buying goods, they're walking back and forth. We all know what it's like to be in a community like that on a Saturday. The sun is shining, and you just feel great about being in a Main Street.
Main Street America is a nationwide movement with a proven track record of revitalizing older and historic downtowns and neighborhood commercial districts. The Main Street America Network brings together thousands of passionate local leaders who contribute their time, energy, and ideas to building more vibrant and sustainable communities.
Entrepreneurs have been the backbone of the American economy for 240 years, and I know that whether it's in the furthest rural corner of the country to a commercial district right in the heart of Chicago, there are men and women with desires to open their own business. What Main Street does is it helps to create the environment in which those businesses are a little bit easier to get up off the ground, and those businesses are more likely to succeed.
Main Streets are once again the incubators of small business and the launching pad of entrepreneurs. Great ideas are nurtured in communities that appreciate the value of local. The Main Street America Network knows how to encourage these pioneering businesses and how to create the environment to help them prosper.
This is a time-tested, comprehensive, market-based, and community-led approach, which has been employed in over 2,000 communities over the last 40 years.
If you want to see America grow, if you really want to see America grow, look at Main Streets.
Being a part of a network like this, you get to share best practices across all kinds of markets. There may be plenty of areas that are different than yours, but somewhere out there, there's a market that's very, very similar. If you can study what they've done, then you can learn about it.
Successful economic development today is not about what you don't have, it's about what you do have. And one of the things that Main Street has done is made people aware of what the value of downtown historic buildings and how a small incremental approach to redevelopment can be the best approach. Too many communities for years thought economic development was all about the one big thing, but successful economic development is much more frequently about lots of small things working synergistically together off of a plan that makes sense. And so, Main Street at its core is about creating a plan for the future.
Today, people are seeking out communities with character and places where they feel connected. Main Street America, downtowns, and districts are places to raise families, start new businesses, build community, and forge the future.
Okay. So... To where we were here. So, what is Main Street? It's a coordinating program of the larger group, Main Street America, to provide local communities with training tools, information, and networking that they need to reinvigorate their commercial districts. Requirements for the coordinating program of Minnesota Main Street, which we would be under, traditional downtown district, which we have, four-point approach and guiding principles. Those are just things to follow and kind of pursue as you're setting goals and thinking about the program in the city. Creating community awareness, establishing a team or a board of sorts, attending different Main Street trainings, quarterly statistics, letter of agreement, which is what would be before you tonight, attending director's meetings, being a national Main Street member, and then meeting five national criteria. And because we've already been accepted into this program, we do meet those criteria. What are certain things that we can look forward to by pursuing and continuing this agreement? A lot of those trainings and workshops that are required are provided free to the city, to the board or staff or whoever's involved with the program. You get free registration to one national and one PAM conference. You get the Minnesota Main Street name and portal access, unlimited consultation. You're eligible for different funds and grants, and I've got a couple of examples of those in other cities upcoming here. Design services and training, strategic plan services, committee orientation and training, onsite visits, networking meetings, evaluation, accreditation visit, and director calls. So, there's a lot of different things that PAM itself provides for the city to be able to implement this program. A couple of examples in other cities in Minnesota, Red Wing, Minnesota is one of them. It's got a population of 16,000. They've had a ton of success with this program. They do different challenges each year, some that PAM sponsors, others that they've put on themselves. They pursued the Small Business Revolution, which is that middle, top-middle picture there. They didn't win. They were very, very close, but one of their businesses was chosen to get free kind of products, reinvigoration, different designs and everything, free to that business. One thing that I really liked on this set of pictures, too, is this fresh look in the alleyways, so kind of rethinking alleys and reinvigorating those a little bit. A lot of downtown businesses have seen great success just with the dedication to Main Street and some of these local businesses. This particular owner owned a bicycle shop downtown there in Red Wing, and they were the winner of one of the retail challenges, and that allowed them to get the funding that the city had pursued for a grant to kind of rethink their business and do some facade upgrading and different things for them. And then, this is that business that I talked about that had gotten some of that free advertising, promoting, reinvigoration from a professional design company for free to them. A quote that I pulled from Red Wing, "They were the first designated and accredited Main Street America organization in Minnesota. Mark of distinction, signifying commitment to comprehensive revitalization, community engagement, and outcome measurement. Partnering with multiple groups, we're realizing the community's vision of a vibrant, prosperous downtown, which attracts people, young and old, to its natural and historic features, recreation and cultural centers, specialty and convenience shopping and services. We're building a thriving downtown so the whole community, businesses, residents, and visitors alike benefit." A second example is in Fairbault. They do some different fun events. That's one big thing for Minnesota Main Street is to create a lot of events that happen downtown. So, one of theirs was a flannel formal. So, they had all sorts of different events and beer tastings and all sorts of different things going on, some good attendance. And volunteer work is huge with this program, too. They really rely on the volunteers to put in time to make these events happen. They... Both Fairbault and Red Wing have specific websites dedicated to this program. They spotlight different businesses. Fairbault does this car cruise night throughout the summer months. Fairbault Main Street Program is organized to unify the central business district with emphasis on Central Avenue to create an attractive destination in which businesses prosper, the community benefits, and residents and visitors enjoy quality downtown experience. So, it is our recommendation that we enter into this agreement with PAM to continue as an affiliated Main Street City for 2018, and then evaluate the program at the end of the year and decide if we want to continue with it in the future. And I realize it's just on this part of the meeting tonight, but it was recommended that we push it forward and continue because there is... We have been given this grace period, and the sooner we can get that agreement signed or choose not to sign it, the better.
Certainly. I just want to make one correction. So, Willmar Downtown Development, the city quit supporting them. I don't know what their activity is at this point, so we're not talking about Willmar Downtown Development, we're talking about the Main Street piece.
Yep, correct.
And so, just to clarify that, I can't remember exactly how you phrased your opening comments there, but I just want to make sure that people understand, we're not talking about Willmar Downtown Development. That's a separate standalone organization. It's just that the city's no longer funding.
Yep. Because the city isn't funding that, the Main Street Program did not stick with the downtown development, so the Main Street Program has come back to the city's kind of agenda, I guess you could say.
Okay. Comments? Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you. I'm supportive of doing a year with this to kind of check it out and see. I think there are good intentions there. I would also hope that our relationship... PAM has a relationship in downtown or has an ownership of downtown, that it would be positive for us to be a part of that and helping them to finish that project, but also, I think, to look at some other things that we can do downtown. So, I am supportive of continuing the membership with it being reviewed at the end of 2018.
Councilmember Fagerly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm in favor of this continuation also. I don't want to put anyone on the spot, but former President Carol Lamer is in the audience. If she wants to speak, I think she was just at a national convention, and Ms. Davis, I think, aren't you on a couple of subcommittees or were? And if you wanted to say anything about your experience, if it's a good deal for the city to continue, I would appreciate that.
I didn't sign my name on this.
Come on up, we want to hear from you.
Give me the mic, and I'll start talking.
Remember the meeting this morning?
Yeah, I know that, so I told you.
Is it payback?
Heads up, heads up.
Payback?
But I was to the national meeting. I have friends that I've gained throughout this country, and with my daughter living in Iowa, I was invited to go along with them since I've been involved along with the downtown type of things. And unfortunately, I would have liked to have seen Willmar out there because the Foxhole Brewery is one of the businesses, the entrepreneurs that started, and that was, you know, a result from the Willmar Downtown, and that was a result from one of the approaches from Main Street, the economic development component that we chose to go with that one. Interesting, at the meeting, one of the things, one of the leaders there said, "Remember Main Street. It helps entrepreneurs, it helps businesses get started, and to have an attractive or good-looking downtown, per se, and some events going on." But it's not the job of Main Street to get the business into their businesses. The business people still have to work and be cohesive, and sometimes people forget that. They want to go along and say, "Well, Main Street, what are you doing for us?" It has to be a combined event. And it is, and that's always the challenge, is that getting the volunteers and the people to work in our holidays, that was another thing that was started. So, we've, you know, they have done things. And every time that I've gone in the last three years, I always meet with the people afterwards and discuss some of the opportunities that we have in Willmar with the immigrant population and that type of thing. And this past year, a fellow spoke about their entrepreneurial training that they do, and that was the first one that said, "Oh, we really don't know what you should do." They do in their city that I was very impressed with, and I would say in Missouri, and I don't remember, Casey is his name, but I can't remember the town they talked from. But they do an entrepreneurial, as I say, that, training, and what they do is have entrepreneurs talking, you know, that have been successful, but they also do like a financial component to it. They do, is this business, is this type of business going to succeed in that? Some real hands-on, not just, you know, there are many colleges and that that have entrepreneurial school and classes, but they say, "Read in this book," that type of thing. They work with them through this class. It's an eight-week program. It was done from 6:00 to 9:00 in the evening, because most of the entrepreneurs are running their business all day long and don't have time except to go at night. And then, after they're done with that class, they stay in touch with them. There is a hired person that does that, stays in touch with them, so that what we want, we want the entrepreneurs, the businesses downtown, but we want them to be successful. Well, in discussing with the fellow that talked about this and how the school works, I asked, and he said, "They have a Tyson plant in their community." And he said, "Yes, and we did get them," but he said, "You have to approach it different than what you do with just saying we're going to have this event or that type of thing." He said, "You, with the population that we have, like we have in our community, to gain their trust and find out who their leaders are, and then work with them to get their trust and to help our downtown, like what is their celebrations? Ours is the Willmar Fest. How do we include that in?" So, some different things along that way. I made some little notes that I haven't had a chance to talk to Ike about, but I believe that Main Street can be a real help for us in that, and some of the trainings that I went to were helpful. It's getting the leadership, or getting a leader to do the blah, 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 because that's what you really need, and then the volunteers to do it. So, that's what I would say, if you vote for it, you know, it's more than just that agreement, because some things, and I'll admit, I was on that board, and, you know, hindsight is 100%. We maybe didn't, as a board, always do the right thing that we should have along the way. Our hearts was in the right place, but there were some things perhaps that we could have done a little bit differently along the way with it. But do agree that it is a good program, but just because you signed that and you got that money, we've got to have people then that will come forward to help make it prosper.
Ms. Davis, you wish to speak?
I'm sure. I didn't know I was going to speak. I didn't either, so... So, as a downtown business owner, I could say that we would have loved to have help when we opened. Some training would have been nice, and our downtown is beautiful, and there's so much more beauty yet to find, and I think Main Street, the Preservation Alliance of Minnesota could be very helpful to us, and I think we should sign it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Fagerly, do you want to have a follow-up?
I was a liaison for four years, and I think there was like 60 to 80 volunteers altogether in all the committees and sub...
Especially at holidays, that took a lot of people.
Yeah, and everyone came together, and it was like a family.
And then, we would have annually, we'd always do our volunteer recognition, but just, we needed more than just the one event, and that's where some of the things that we, you know, we grew. I'll take that to the end of the night, so I'll stop right there.
Yes. I know you're really behind it. The only thing is, if you're going to talk, I want you to come to the mic, because we're recording, so... But anyways, basically, she said there were a lot of good volunteers, and they got a lot of good stuff done, and the holidays was a lot of fun, and they did an annual event, and that's how they recognize their volunteers. That a pretty good summary?
And we have to continue to work at it. You know, we just don't sign this, and everything's going to take care of itself, so you've got to get involved.
Councilmember Plowman, followed by Mesky?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good segue from Mr. Fagerly's comments. I think the value of what's offered for the money, I think, is an excellent value. There's probably a lot of insightful tools and training and stuff. My main concern is who our main point of contact's going to be and who's really going to take ownership of it, and if it's the city, then how best are we going to organize that? Because I think organization's probably pivotal when it comes to bringing all this stuff together, because they can give us all the information in the world, and yeah, if it just spins around in a think tank and we do nothing, then it's worthless. But, yeah, I guess that would be my main question. Who's the main... Who would be the initial point of contact, and where do we go from there?
So, at this point, our thought process is of the subcommittee that met...
Who's the main, who would be the initial point of contact, and where do we go from there?
So at this point, our thought process is of the subcommittee that met, and again, the subcommittee was City Administrator Holland, myself, Sarah, and Councilmember Fagerly, because Councilmember Fagerly served a number of years as the liaison, so he has a lot of the historical knowledge. Our city administrator has a lot of experience because in Chillicothe, they were a Main Street and actually have received a number of awards. And so the initial thought processes are that Ms. Anderson would take the lead on our side, and then she would be the lead if that's the direction of the administrator, because the administrator directs staff, but if we do this, then that would become one of her assigned tasks.
That answers my question, thank you.
Councilmember Mesky, followed by Elverado.
Nope, that answers my question, because I had the same one.
Councilmember Elverado.
Oh, well, I'm excited about the possibility of maybe sharing experience and knowledge like with a Red Wing or one of the other cities, so we wouldn't have to reinvent the wheel. So, and then a new business might have an opportunity to say, hey, we have worked with these people, work with them, we'll help you be successful. So I like the model, it sounds pretty exciting, and I'm for moving this forward. Thank you.
Additional comments? Ms. Anderson, thank you for your presentation. We've placed you on the spot, and again, you have performed flawlessly, so thank you for your good work, we appreciate it. We will move that to the regular council agenda, we did talk about that at our work session last time. This was a follow-up from Ms. Anderson to have an opportunity to present to the council on some of the questions that were raised from there without doing that at the regular council. Next, we have a presentation from Mr. John Heron, talking about Wilmer Municipal Utilities' Membership Agreement with MRES, and if we choose to concur with that or if we choose to send them in another direction, I know what his desire is, so. Mr. Heron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselors, appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you again this evening and provide an update for you with what we have going on over at the utilities. A quick recap before we move forward with our joint action agency in Missouri River. PRAM substation work that is going to be starting, we had our pre-construction meeting, so if you see activity along Highway 23 by PRAM on the south side of 23, that will be the site and preparation work for our PRAM substation. You will also see work, we had our pre-construction meeting for the updates to our diesel generators, we need to bring them into D-Shop, Rice compliant, basically EPA compliance. You will see work going on there as well shortly. And also on our water treatment plant, with our water treatment plant updates, with taking the chloride regulations into consideration, that project's going forward as well. There's more information to come on that. The dollars, as everybody's well aware of, are very high on that project, but we're looking at all potential opportunities to address that, and more to come. So with that, as we move on to power supply, we started out about a year and a half ago looking at how to prepare the utilities for the future, and with that, the commission looked at the components that play a major role, have a significant impact to our power supply. When the process started with looking at district heat, which is tied to our generation that we have, along with power supply, and then followed up by what do we do with our current plant, as well as is there potential for new generation? So everybody knows where we're at with district heat, and we move forward with power supply, and as Mayor indicated in front of you in your packets tonight, and hopefully will be carried forward to the council meeting, would be a concurring resolution with the commission to move forward with partnering up with the joint action agency to take advantage of economies of scale as well as additional expertise in areas that we need assistance in, because the utility our size, we're not large enough to have staff available and be experts in all areas. We have a fantastic staff there, they do a great job, but by moving over to Missouri River, we'll gain another level of support and expertise there. In your packet, you have two resolutions. One is the commission's resolution authorizing our chairperson to execute our agreements that are required for membership. Also in your packet is a concurring resolution to the commission's resolution authorizing execution of the agreements. Along with that, the agreements, I believe the agreements are in your packet, that go along with those resolutions, I'll give a real high-level overview, by all means, ask questions as we go through them, if you have any. The first one, and that's the main agreement, is referred to the S1. And some of the high key points in that agreement, if you want to flip through it or if you have it, would be on page six. We talk about a buy-in cost, there's a buy-in. We need to pay our proportionate share of their assets that the sixty members that presently make up Missouri River have invested in, and those assets consist of different types of generation, hydrogeneration, gas generation, some coal generation, solar, wind, a variety of resources. That buy-in cost that you see on page six is a one-time buy-in, $420,000, it's a one-time payment. We had the choice of paying that over a period of years or one-time paying. The savings is between $40,000 and $80,000 with one-time paying.
We're not finding it on page six. We're not finding what you're talking about.
We don't have the S1 agreement.
Oh, you don't have that agreement? Okay. So that's, okay, so if you don't have the agreements, I'll just run through the agreements that are, that go along with the concurring resolution of the commission. So first agreement, main agreement is the S1 agreement, it's 34 pages long, and the first note of interest in there is, as I was saying, is the buy-in costs that go along with it. Then the next area of interest would be our present contracts that are noted in the agreement. Basically, we have contracts from two other power suppliers, one expires in '25 and '26, and from our other power supply agreement that we have, that one will expire in '30 and '33. So power supply contracts, the ones we're in, and even the ones we're going to enter in, they're long-term. Long-term commitments because of the time that it takes to build generation, to obtain permits, both for generation and for transmission. Then we move forward, the term of our contract is out to 2057. Again, long-term, as I was indicating, our contracts are long-term. However, our ability to exit the contracts, the first opportunity is in 2027, and every five years thereafter, we have the ability to cap the amount of energy that we would take from the joint action agency, and then we'd be back either looking for another agency to buy power, partner up with, or back on the market to procure power. Then, for the first five years of our agreement, we have a discounted rate for energy, because basically we'll be looking at off-power that we'll be receiving from the joint action agency, and that has to do with our present contracts. Our present contract, we have all our peak power, our on-peak power, supply covered, so it's basically off-peak. So for the first, through '21, May of '21, we have a one-cent discount. Through '22, we have a three-quarter cent discount, and we have another half a percent discount out to 2023. And then also in our agreement, under covenants, and there's a statement in there that municipality agrees to maintain rates for power and energy to its customers, which shall provide to municipality revenue sufficient to meet its obligations. So basically, there's a statement in there that we need to set rates so that we have enough revenue to meet our obligations of purchase power. That's the S1 agreement, so it's the highlights in the S1. The additional agreements then refer to or tie back into the S1, a Schedule A, which talks about where our points of interconnect are on a transmission system into our distribution Schedule B is our rate schedule that we'll be paying for wholesale power, basically for demand, there's three different tiers, '21 for the summer months, '16 for the winter months, all other months $10.50, and our energy rate is 3.15 cents. So that's our Schedule B. Schedule C is our transmission rate schedule. Here in this area, our transmission is provided by GRE, Great River Energy Services, so our rates will not change under this agreement, it's basically a pass-through. The revenue that we receive as being a transmission owner, as well as our expenses, will not change under these agreements. Another agreement that's in there is our agreement that talks about the membership and how the agency is structured. Basically, the home office is in Sioux Falls, South Dakota, but it's in Iowa, registered in the state of Iowa, and it has to do with multiple states. Iowa was a state that allowed for multiple states to enter or be part of the same agency. And the last would be the bylaws of the agency. Basically, states how annual meetings take place, special meetings, notices of meeting, what constitutes a quorum, representations, attendance at meetings, board of directors, vacancies, filling vacancies, alternate directors, identifications, and then meetings of the directors and committees, committee structures that they have. So those are the agreements that go along with the concurring resolutions that you have in front of you this evening. With that, I will yield it back to Mayor Calvin for questions.
Mr. Heron, can you, so we did not, we did not receive those documents, but the commission looked at this probably a month and a half or two months ago, right?
Correct. The commission has been looking at this probably for a good six months, we've been studying, six to nine months studying our options for power supply.
I'm talking about when they came out and did the presentation.
Oh, correct.
Yeah. And so I attended that, and some key takeaways from that is that we will get a lot of ancillary services included with the agreement, but more importantly, this is really going to put a cap on our energy costs, and it's going to, long-term, if you take a look at a chart, we're gradually inching up as a utility for costs. With this agreement, we'll actually start, we'll have a little dip down, then we'll have a little dip up, then we'll dip back down, I think it's 2027, 2025, something like that, there'll be a dip back down. And so we're going to have long-term energy cost savings through this agreement that we wouldn't have if we did self-generation. And Councilmember Mesky, I hope I'm not stealing your thunder here, but I sat through the presentations, and to say they were impressive is an understatement. They've got it together, they know what they're doing, they manage this, and I was very impressed, so. Anybody that wishes to speak, I'll be quiet now. Councilmember Fagerly.
Since I have them here, so the $400,000, are you going to pay that upfront or over payments?
It'll be paid upfront. The savings paying it upfront, when I look at net present value, is about $40,000, but depending on how much we run our current plant, we could be as high as $80,000 savings, so the commission has elected to pay it upfront, so.
And then, number two, the one turbine is working now?
They're both working.
Oh, one wasn't, was that this morning or?
Yeah. One was down again this morning, went down Saturday evening or late Saturday afternoon, but they're both running again.
Okay, because everyone knows when they're not running.
Yeah, hard to notice. Go ahead, and then I'll talk about the wind turbines a little bit.
And then number three, have any of the people that are on the hot water system, have they hooked up with electric boilers or electric heater, electric forced air furnaces? Are you losing all the customers?
The short answer is yes, we're losing those customers to CenterPoint Gas.
Yeah.
So, which is understandable. I mean, it's hard to beat gas, and today, gas is relatively cheap and appears to remain there into the distant future, so I would anticipate mostly customers will go there. A little bit of an update on the wind turbines. Wind turbines, as I believe most everyone is aware of, we've been indicating that it was going to be probably June before that turbine was up. It was down because of our inability to get parts, DEWIND, the manufacturer, the company of the wind turbines, basically went bankrupt, and we had ordered parts, and those parts had to be made overseas, and lead time on it is, was three months, so we're looking at June 1st. However, the company that bought DEWIND, they're trying to get started, there's a limited number of turbines in the United States here, but they bought the company, bought the turbines that are here in the United States, and in their warehouse, they had the parts that we needed, so we purchased the parts from them, when our parts that we ordered, we weren't able to cancel the order anymore, because it was already in the process of being made, so we'll have a backup, but we received the parts, and the turbines, or the turbine that was down has been spinning now for two weeks already, so we're very pleased with that, because as you stated, Commissioner Fagerly, you're up in there, everybody notices it. So we're pleased with the new company, with a little bit that we have worked with them, it's Olympia, Olympia Renewable, and they hired some of the DEWIND staff, some of their technicians that we've been able to lean on, so we're looking for the opportunity to develop a good relationship with them. I think it'll be an asset to us as we go forward.
That's good, thanks.
Welcome.
Councilmember Fontas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's always good to have you here with us, it's always informative. You referenced in Schedule B, the rate for power was 3.15 cents. Can you tell us how that compares to what we're paying now?
No, I wish I could. Our agreements that we have with our energy providers now are all classified as confidential, but I will tell you it's significantly less, so.
Thank you.
But offline, I can share with you.
Just a desire of the Municipal Utilities to have us move this forward so that we can get these contracts signed, it's in the best interest of us to do so. So I'm seeing I have a question over here, Councilmember Plom.
Yeah, I am, I do think it's important to do our due diligence, I'm wondering if it is possible to get a copy of these agreements, the S1, the Schedule A, B, and C, and the bylaws that go along with that? Is it possible to get copies of those?
Certainly.
I thought they were in your packets.
Okay.
So we'll make sure, we'll push them out.
Okay.
I'll push them to Mr. Holland tomorrow, and Mr. Holland can push them out, too.
It's appreciated, thank you.
So I have a question for you then, if we're going to get those, we probably shouldn't vote today on it, so are you okay, does that do anything for you if we push it out two weeks? Actually, it's three weeks.
Yeah, we've got three weeks in there. Not really, we can work with it. We're hoping to get them completed tonight, but we can work with it, it has to be.
I guess, you know, my preference would be is that we can move it forward tonight.
Right.
A lot of times, we have these things that are time-sensitive, and I think it's important. Councilmember Christiansen and I have been having conversations over the last three years about how can we save money to our users, and I think if this is an opportunity for us to save money for our users, I think we should be, we should possibly move it forward. If council chooses not to, I certainly would strongly recommend that we do move it forward, but if you want to wait, we certainly can do that, but I would suggest we move it forward.
Mayor Calvin, do you answer Councilman Plom's question? Once we do push it out, if the council does elect to move forward, I'd be more than happy to come back and answer questions, or when you receive the agreement, if you have questions, just give me a call.
Councilmember Mesky.
Well, it is an exciting opportunity for the city of Wilmer, and I think we should pursue it. It is unfortunate those documents weren't in there, I know we had talked about having them, making sure they were there. I think it will be, it will convince you, if his words did not, they will convince you as well, so it would be, to me, we should all be comfortable supporting it, and if that means that we have to wait till the next meeting, I'm comfortable with that as well.
Break the table.
I'm not sure if that was a sign we're supposed to agree. Councilmember Fontas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Has council had a chance to review this agreement?
Legal counsel? Legal counsel?
Right.
Yeah, legal counsel's reviewed it. Right. Yeah. Legal counsel was on, I attended the meeting when the presentation happened, and legal staff was on the phone at that time.
And just to clarify, the utilities has been represented by the firm of McGranshey on this, because our firm has a relationship with Missouri River Energy Services. So, they used, just for purposes of developing these contracts and negotiating them on behalf of the utilities, that other firm. But they were actively involved.
But you were listening on the meeting, correct?
Yeah, correct. I was on that call.
I remembered that.
The resolution, and correct me, Mr. Scott, if I'm speaking out of turn, but as far as structuring, who signs, how they should be structured, the resolutions, I believe Mr. Scott provided some guidance with the legal counsel that we retained to review these, so that the resolutions were properly structured within our charter. So, that was Mr. Scott's involvement with the agreements.
So, we will move that forward to the agenda, and you will be towards the beginning, so you won't have to sit all night.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
No, I'm just, I'm looking, I'm not sure that we had full agreement on whether we should receive the documents or not on that, so.
Okay, is there consensus to move it forward? I seen at least four or five heads nodding yes, so that's why I was saying, I guess it wouldn't have been consensus, the majority of what I, the heads nodding, the majority were more than, even the people that weren't nodding would not have overruled that, so. Do we have some type of an agreement to move this forward? Please indicate some way that we can do that. Councilmember Plowman.
I would support moving it forward, going on faith, we will receive the document shortly.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilperson Plowman can look at the documents before the meeting starts at 7:00. You should be safe.
Then, okay. I'll be happy to review the documents before 7:00.
We will, we'll move those documents forward. Councilmember Nelson, do you have a comment?
No, no, I don't. It's just unfortunate that they weren't in the packet, and I think it's a concern that they probably haven't had a public eye. So, that was just a question. But I have full faith in the Municipal Utilities Commission with that. I'm just questioning whether we've done our due diligence in reviewing it, so.
Okay, I will come to answer that. The meeting was an open meeting, it was an advertised meeting, it was a meeting at the Municipal Utilities that anybody could have attended. And those meetings are posted. The agenda item was pushed out. As to being an important meeting, I did have a conversation with the president of the commission, and also Mr. Herron. Mr. Herron strongly suggested I attend the meeting, so I did. I did not report that back to the council, but I feel very comfortable in the document that it's been prepared, been reviewed. We've had our attorneys look at it, and so I'm comfortable with it. I do agree with you that it would have been nice that council would have had an opportunity to review it. Anything else? Next is, thank you, Mr. Herron.
Thank you.
Next, the consideration of community ed and rec job descriptions. Mr. Holland.
Mayor and council, two weeks ago, we talked about these two positions and where we're at as far as the recruitment and filling these positions. The council had requested copies of the latest job descriptions, which are included in your packets. Subsequently, there was a vote to stop the recruitment on both these positions. And until the council could review these position descriptions, I did contact the school superintendent. He informed me that the CER director position is currently being advertised. They did not stop that recruitment. Based upon the motion that was made and approved by the council, he has recommended, and we're in the process of setting up a meeting with the school superintendent, myself, the mayor, and council member Nelson, and Mrs. Matheson that sits on the school board, so that we can discuss the role of CER and our relationship between the two different organizations. We've had a little bit of issue trying to find a date and time to do so, but I anticipate within the next couple of weeks, we will sit down with him. I will also tell you that I sent out an email on Friday, I believe it was, that this position of the Adult Enrichment Community Center Supervisor will be 60% paid for by the city. That was an error on my behalf, but when I talked to Mr. Brizendine on Friday, he corrected me on that. Also tonight, Mr. Brizendine would have been here, but there was a personal emergency that didn't allow him to be here tonight, in case you had any questions. But with that, I will also say that I recommend that if someone out of the council wants to discuss the position descriptions with staff, that we can do that, we can sit down with them and look at making any changes. I briefly scanned over the both PDs prior to tonight's meeting. I reviewed these over a month ago, so I don't have them memorized in my head. But generally, just so the council knows and the public knows, I've been here about 12 months, and we've hired about six people, and we have about five positions open right now. I do not go through the position descriptions and analyze them and scrutinize them. I put my trust in the departments and in our HR department, and same thing with the school district and with their HR director over there. I think they've done a good job of putting these descriptions together. And lastly, I will say that all the input that came from the council on these two positions and from the public that was forwarded to me, I did forward that to the schools district, and they were incorporated in the descriptions. And that was part of the discussion that we had approximately about four weeks ago. And so, with that, I'll end it.
So, you said that you were in error in saying it was a 60% paid by the city? What is the correct numbers?
The pardon?
In your opening comments, you said that 60% was paid for by the city. Was that an error, did you say?
Right. I thought that it was just the opposite, but I think, I thought I had put out that it was going to be paid mostly for by the school, because there was a question about that. So, that's why I was correcting myself.
So, what is the percentages?
60, 40, city.
6% city, 40% school?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Osmas.
On a clarification, on the community ed and rec director position first, under the people that they directly supervise, it has on their civic center arena supervisor. I was thinking that that used to be a community ed and rec position, and then I thought it got transferred over to the city. Am I correct on that?
So, currently, Mr. Brizendine does still supervise Rob, is my understanding, yes. So, it hasn't switched over. He doesn't report to any, he reports to Mr. Brizendine first.
But how is it that he's a city employee, then? Or is he not?
Rob, the director out there, is a city employee. There are two or three people that work for Mr. Brizendine that are on the city payroll. It's complicated, I understand.
I know. But the reason I bring that up is I think of the civic center being a city facility, and it makes sense to me that we would have a city employee that's running it. And so, I feel the same way, then, when we get into the next position about the community center, in that it's a city building, we should have a city employee running it.
Right.
Be responsible for it.
Right. And I think that's why Mr. Brizendine was telling me that the majority of it is going to be paid for by the city.
Okay. But the direct supervision still goes to the director, CER director?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Then, a second point down on the, and I know you said you didn't, like, minutely go through each one of the job descriptions.
Right.
But underneath the community center supervisor position, in one part, and I'm trying to see if I can find it, it says that they supervise no one. Under, it says supervision none, supervises none. Then, underneath the essential functions, just right below it, it says that they will supervise, discipline, and assess performance of full and part-time staff and volunteers. So, to me, that makes a difference of what level of personnel and pay they would be at, which one is correct.
Right. I know that this was translated from the school district's format into ours. And when I look at that, and it says supervises a none, and then essential functions, just based upon my HR background, generally, that means when you put supervisors, that means you have a couple criteria, hiring, firing authority, and/or evaluation authority, or at least input on that. And if you don't have those two criteria, then you put none. Even though you may supervise baseball umpires that are, you know, in a recreation league, you may supervise volunteers, you may interact with maintenance personnel that come to a facility. And so, you do have some of those management-type of skills, but I'm speculating that that's what I would say. But I can follow up on that if you have a curiosity.
Well, I just, probably the thing that flagged me, then, was the discipline. Because if you don't have the authority to hire and fire, you usually don't have the authority to discipline.
Right.
So, but. And then, did we take out, I thought there had been some stuff in there about the swimming pool and chemicals and knowledge of swimming pools? Is that, are we factoring that in? Is that a consideration for that position?
That I don't know.
Okay.
Still under working conditions.
Okay.
On page three. Miss Osmas, do you want me to move on?
Yes, please.
Okay. Councilmember Nelson. I'm sorry, I was.
I didn't know you were waiting on me.
I was looking at you, waiting for some type of a nod that you were good, but, so, I apologize for that.
I'm good, Mayor.
Councilmember Nelson.
So, just to clarify, it's my understanding this position was posted prior to our last meeting for this, Director of Community Education and Recreation was posted by the school prior to our first meeting. And I don't know that there can be changes to it once the posting has been done, is my understanding. But I do think there are items in there that I am thankful that we are going to have a meeting with the school to clarify, because I do think it's going to change the scope of the work that is being done by that director, and that it will also require the city to do some of the items that the current director was doing. And that's the part that I was trying to get clarification on also. And I think once we flush that out with who's going to be responsible for some of those things, I think it will also change some of the needs that we have for park board and even functions that are on the community ed and rec advisory board. I personally would like to see, and I've gotten information from a couple people, I'd personally like to see us put this job and job description on hold until we know and understand those things. I don't know, has the school approved the fact that this would be a city employee? Because part of the work that's being done falls directly under their early childhood or under their education requirements that they have for adult enrichment. And it was my understanding that that was to be a school employee, so I'm not quite sure. In fact, I've wondered with this position if it shouldn't be two people, that we could have someone, I mean, if we can, we have, I forget the figure that's in our budget, but perhaps that person could work for the city to supervise and the community center, and the other person could work directly for the school to be the parts with that. And so, I am, I'm just curious, I know we've gotten about four or five versions of this going back from being a school employee to being a city employee, to being a variety of things. And I really would like for us to clarify that with the two partners that are at the table. I also have a concern about us sitting down one-on-one to review this. I think that this is important enough that we should all hear it together as a council. And so, my guess is from how it's on the agenda, we're not doing anything with either one of these, because one has already been posted, and one is not going to be posted at this time, if I understand correctly.
Right.
And so, I think it would merit us looking at it again, once we've had that meeting with the school, that we could come back and make sure that we're all on the same page for what we want to do. I also had someone come up and say, you know, there is a community center advisory board that works very hard with that. Have they been consulted in how the job description was put together? I know that Darlene Schroder has worked on that, but I think there are people questioning whether we've gotten the exact document that we need to be successful with the community center. And so, my request is that this, at least this one, stay on hold until we have that meeting and have a chance to review with what the school is proposing and whether it can be a city employee or two people.
The document you referenced was utilized from Mrs. Schroder, and it was directly talked about in the discussion when I sat there with the school superintendent, Mr. Brizendine and their HR director. And we went through a half a dozen things that she had incorporated into her letter.
If I may, she did send another email, and I think some of the questions that they still are having is, what is the mission of the Womer Community Center? And how does this strategy for engaging the community fit into what we're proposing to do? What are the hours? How will recruitment and use of volunteers? And so, I think there's still some more homework for us to do when it relates to the community center and what we want that position to be, since it is a new position. It hasn't been there for a while. And so, I'm thankful that we are meeting together to clarify some of those things, and hopefully can get off to a positive start.
Councilmember Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not really sure what I'm asking, because I'm not on the inside loop of this. But what's really going on? I don't, I'm not following all this. I mean, obviously, we were to the point of thinking that this was done, there was a little bit of confusion last time, we thought we have clarification now. But what's going on in the background that I'm missing that this keeps, well?
Councilmember Nelson.
The question for me is, is how I read the changes in the document. This position, the director position, will no longer be doing project management. We've got $1 million worth of parks, park projects this year. Mr. Brizendine has been the project manager. If you read in the job description, it talks about coordination with our city engineer. So, what physical tasks are we having to take back as a city to do that? It's my understanding that the school did not want, basically, management of the buildings, the actual maintenance and management of the buildings is not something that's been done on the school side from the director's standpoint, but it has been, some of that has been done on the city side. That's the clarification I'm looking for. I asked the question before we signed the agreement, if we could afford to stay in the agreement. I want to know how the city is going to incorporate the tasks that are currently being done into what we do now with that. The secondary piece is a new position that has been being waited on from the coordinator position for a long time. There's been money to do there, and there has been no movement to do that. I think it would be wise to wait till there's a new director in place to do that. I think there just are clarifications within the contract. There's a reciprocal that goes one way, and it doesn't. There's a reciprocal that goes one way, and it doesn't go the other way. What we're creating here is part of the direction that is not in the contract. The community ed and rec advisory board is asking whether there can be changes made to the contract as it works, and I just think we need to put the partners back at the table and make sure we understand what the school's expectations are, because what I'm hearing from the school, I don't know that I'm hearing the same thing from the city.
So, to try to capture this, the position of the community ed and rec director has been posted and is posted. And so as the old saying goes, that ship has sailed.
That's Brizendine's.
That's currently held by Mr. Brizendine, correct. I believe that this council, almost in unison, said that they wanted to reevaluate the agreement within the 18-month period to make sure that we have all of this fleshed out. I think we have to take them one at a time, because if we start clumping them together, they get more confusing than they already are. So that one, I think there may be a need to move that forward if council so wishes. What I'm hearing from at least one council member, if not others, is that for the other position, the one out of the community center, that we hold on that position, because that's a position the city would have responsibility for. If I'm not hearing that correctly, please inform me of that, but in, for all due process and to move things forward, I would like to see us separate the two issues, talk about the one issue, then talk about the other issue. I'm not trying to push this forward, I'm just trying to bring some clarity, because the more we talk about it, the more I get confused about it. Councilmember Nelson.
If I may, it's my understanding, we don't need to take any action on the director position, because the school has done that already, and that's not something that we can change at this time.
But we made a motion at the last meeting to halt the process. We have to give direction to the school board that we're now in agreement with them proceeding. Otherwise, they're going to be under the understanding on the motion that was made, a formal motion made by this council, that we should stop the process. If we don't give them that direction, how are they going to know, based, we gave them a formal notice, how are they going to know that now we want them to move forward?
I can't, I don't know the answer to that, because the job had already been posted. We were told that it hadn't, but it had been posted. So the motion that we had was something that already had taken place, and I don't believe the school can stop that. So I think it's something that we just have to live with, so I'm not quite sure, sure with that.
Councilmember Osmus.
I do think we need to move ahead with that director position. They've posted it. I don't see that there's a lot that we're going to be able to change, and we said we were going to review it in 18 months. I think, like you said, that's, I'll do a different one. That horse is out of the stable.
I agree. I agree.
Okay. On the, so we're done with that one. On the community center supervisor position, I'm just wondering if Darlene Schroder could speak.
I prefer at this point, because we have five minutes left of the meeting, if we're not going to resolve it today, to bring that back at another meeting, when we could have a more in-depth conversation regards to that. If council wishes for that to happen, I'm more than happy to have that happen. But I'm seeing it 6:40 right now. We have three more items on the agenda, and when we get into labor issues, we bogged on quickly. And I, we were flying through the agenda, and I thought, we're good for time. We're not. Councilmember Christians.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe in that, in our contract with them, that 18 months, we can renegotiate anytime we want. We just, it has to be like a 30 or 60-day notice. So it doesn't have to be done tonight, and it can be done after the new director has been hired also. I mean, we can make those changes as we see necessary. So, I agree. Let's pull the plug on this one and get the train going.
So we have horses, trains, and ships. And they're all moving forward. Do we have consensus, or at least an agreement that I feel comfortable with?
That the director can move forward, not the adult enrichment community center. Okay.
Councilmember Maskey.
I know you want to separate them, and I don't want to try to muddy the waters, but when you had the agreement go forward, that I don't know if it was as properly vetted as it could have been on the city side, and we've heard that, when you hire the director, I think some of that was, we were trying, perhaps trying to iron out some of the pieces that were maybe missing in the contract and putting it into the position that makes them connected. And can you change, the question would be, it's a 60-40 city position, is that correct? And most of this was written by the school, is that correct?
No.
No?
It was revised by the city, so I don't know.
Well, and so, I mean, once this position's there, I know we can change the agreement, but you can't change the job description that they're hired under. Is that my understanding?
Well, the first, the first one is already done, so we can't do anything about the director position. But this other one hasn't gone anywhere yet.
I understand that. I'm asking, because, again, because you've brought it up several times, is that the agreement, we're not happy with the agreement, it doesn't delineate what everybody's position is and what their investment is, but if you all of a sudden have a director position that lays out very clearly what they are to do, if you modify that agreement in any way, you can't modify this job position.
I'm not asking to modify the agreement. I'm asking to understand what the agreement did, and for us to react to that agreement and put in place how we are going to function with the new agreement. And that's the part that I'm asking for clarification on. And the second job description is a new position. It perhaps would be better served by the new director helping to decide how those things needed to be laid out. I'm not sure we should be deciding that at this point in time until we completely understand what the new agreement did lay out.
Mayor, I would just say one thing. As far as position descriptions and hiring, and, you know, you hire someone and you say, here's your position description, here's the recruitment. The next day, you can change it. They do it in my position every time. And it is legal, and it's not really, you know, that unusual. So you can modify those later on. You know, as far as changing something substantial, then that's a different story. But if you're tweaking it, you're adding a duty, you're removing a duty, things like that, who's paying for it, the budget, those things like that, it's perfectly fine. So I just want to point that out.
Thanks.
I was specifically told that once the position for the director was posted at the school, that they could not make changes to it. What happens after that, I don't know. But I think that's maybe the difference between the types of positions that we're talking about, too. So, and I'm not asking for changes on the director position, because as someone said, that ship has sailed. And so what I'm asking is that we wait on the other one to clarify what we did agree to and how that structure is going to be, so that we have the best position that we can for the community center and for adult enrichment.
Okay, the way I see it, right now, we have a 4-4 agreement to move it forward.
There's nothing to move forward.
Council, what do you wish to do?
Move it forward. What are we moving forward?
The community ed and rec director position. To make a motion at the regular meeting to let the school board know that we are in agreement with the hiring process for that one position.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
So it's going forward for the, yes, okay, I agree with that.
Okay. We'll move that, Mr. Holland, we'll move that forward as an agenda item. We are adjourned. Oh, I don't have to do that for this one.
We made a motion to delay it for two weeks. That's what we're. We made a motion to delay it for two weeks.
Which one?